All right, welcome to the Kent County Board of Commissioners' work session on facilities planning. We are ready to get started here, so this is our call to order. Our next item is the work session, and we have Al here to start us off.
All right, thank you. Okay, this is a follow-up to the three educational sessions we held with commissioners. I know not everyone was able to attend, and we'll have some in attendance today that weren't able to attend those, so we thought we would run through the information, plus a couple of updates related to questions that came up during those sessions. And so, obviously, facilities master planning continues to be an ongoing process in the state's fastest-growing county, and also an iterative process. As the needs and service delivery expectations grow, our facilities planning evolves to meet those needs. And obviously, updating the space needs assessment is one of those critical activities for us to keep current on maintaining our organizational efficiencies for all of our county-owned properties. Kent County engaged with Progressive AE to focus specifically on the growth and service delivery needs of county departments located at 82 Ionia, 300 Monroe, that's our county administration building, 320 Ottawa, IT across the street, understanding that some functions must remain downtown due to courthouse proximity, while others have the flexibility to operate either downtown or on the Fuller campus where we do have plenty of space as well. We did held the three educational sessions with commissioners, and then we also met with Commissioners Hennessy and Baker as they are out of town and could not be in attendance today. So with that, we thought we'd start out by having Progressive. We have Brad Thomas and Melissa Malberg here, and they will walk us through the report, overview and findings of their report.
Good morning, and thank you. I'm Brad Thomas, I'm President CEO, Progressive AE. We have had the pleasure of working with the county on your space needs studies now for approaching 10 years. Our initial engagement started back in 2015, as it's indicated on the slide, and we look at the timeline, where we really dug in deep, did a full assessment of all of the county facilities, met with staff, and ultimately made some recommendations. And in 2019, we re-engaged because a lot of work had been accomplished in understanding sort of where were we, how had we progressed, and really what was next. Of course, as we were wrapping up our work and nearing final recommendations, we had this wonderful thing known as a global pandemic, and it caused us to pause all of the work that we were working on. And of course, you know, the world changed. And so, as we came through the pandemic, it was important for us to go back and not just pick up where we left off, but really look to see how we think about work, how we engage with the workplace, and really understand how services are being delivered into county today, what changed through the pandemic, and how do we really need to think about work in the future. That's really the post-COVID needs analysis we wanted to report on today. Some of what you're going to hear is repeat for those that were in the work sessions. I thought, however, we would sort of maybe just fly through sort of a high-level overview. I know that you know your facilities as well as anybody else does, but just, again, to highlight the scope of the work that we worked on, was really looking at the downtown facilities, the various properties that you'll hear us talking about today, or the building we're in today, 300 Monroe, 82 Ionia, a property that back in the original study we did back in 215, we talked about changes in terms of the services that are provided there, sort of the aging of that building and its functionality, and need to look at selling that property. 320 Ottawa, across the street from us, just out the windows, we've got the county courthouse downtown, and then 82 Ionia. And then, of course, in addition to the downtown facilities, we have the Fuller campus, putting a highlight up on the screen right now, located at Fuller and 196, where we have the overall campus core operations out there. The county's done a wonderful job of constantly updating its master plan, and as we were looking at where and how the services are delivered for the county, the Fuller campus, Fuller complex was an area that we certainly looked at as a high potential for opportunities to continue to invest in those county operations. It has great, great access from a vehicular standpoint, parking availability, as well as transit and other means to access the campus. So what I thought I would do is invite Melissa Malberg up, a colleague, a principal with the firm. Melissa leads our Workplace Strategy Group in the office, and so Melissa did a lot of the work, so I thought I'd ask Melissa to do the presentation.
Morning, everyone.
Welcome.
So, thank you. So as we approach a project like this, where we want to make sure that we're setting the county up for as long-term of success as we can, Al mentioned operational success, we want to make sure that we're not only looking through the lens of efficiency, but that we're looking through the lens of what is going to be most meaningful and impactful for the county in the services that you provide, in the talent that you attract. And so we spent a bit of recalibration at the beginning of the effort on this last round, coordinating with the county administration and staff to understand priorities for this work, and principles that we should be following. Guiding principles really for us are a lens through which we review our data and our findings, and make sure that what we're bringing back to you aligns with where the county should be headed, where the county wants to go. So as we worked through this with the county, the three principles that we identified to drive this work were excellent customer service, it's something that the county has always focused on and done a great job of, and anything that we do that impacts your facilities should be ensuring that we're providing excellent quality customer service, or allowing your staff to provide the quality customer service that they do to all of the county. The next being health and wellbeing of your employees. Attracting talent is only going to be more and more critical in the future, and the county needs to have that top of mind, just like any other business or organization might need to. So again, the work that we do needs to be through the lens of making sure that we can help you attract the caliber of talent that you need to help the county succeed in the future, especially as Brad mentioned, how our perceptions have changed post-COVID. And then the last one really kind of wraps all of that up, but just making sure that we're being future-forward, innovation-focused. None of us can technically predict the future, unfortunately, but we can look to what may be coming and make sure that decisions that we're making are at least setting you up for success, whether that's through flexibility or options, thinking about how service delivery and constituent needs might change in the future. Couple things that we noted as we did this work, 82 Ionia continues to be at the top of our list as a key focus for the work. It's something like Brad mentioned that we identified in the original study in 2014 and 2015, again in 2019, and it again rose to the top in this refreshed effort, as something that we really needed to pay attention to, what happens with 82 Ionia. Pre-COVID, a lot of the services that the county provided were in-person, and so we were looking at how in-person services were delivered across most of the department that had any kind of public interface. COVID required us to move a lot of those online, digitally, remote, in some capacity or another. And while some things came back in person, a lot of those systems that you were required to adopt to serve the public actually helped a lot, and were something that we heard from departments wanted to stay. Things like being able to have kids stay in their school building and connect to friend of the court remotely, instead of having to drive all the way to downtown and meet with somebody in person. It was really a benefit to those kids in not disrupting their school day as much. So there are some service delivery opportunities to maintain virtually or remote, online, in an app, that really changed the makeup of how much was required to be downtown, as we looked at the different departments, where their best location was. We saw kind of a sea change in a lot of the departments on how they perceived that need. What that also shifted was the understanding of how difficult it can be for some people to get downtown. Obviously, some constituents are already downtown, but there are a lot of people in the county that don't have as easy access, maybe aren't familiar with downtown, so wayfinding to get to any specific place is confusing, finding parking if they're not on a bus line, getting down here through public transportation isn't as easy. So as those services aren't required to be connected to something else that's already downtown, that ease of connectivity and wayfinding, again, rose to the top as something that we could solve through how we locate services. I already mentioned talent attraction and engagement, but that's certainly something that we want to keep top of mind for you as you move forward. And then the last thing, had been on our radar all along, was understanding physical storage needs. In our original planning, it was, you know, this is something we need to do to digitize storage, we will be digitizing storage, our needs will go down. You've done a great job. So kudos to all of the departments in the five years, eight years, I guess, since that original report was published. A ton of that storage need was reduced based on record retention, kind of meeting the end of life, I guess, of needing to save some physical files and being able to digitize quite a bit of information, so that impacted our space needs as well. So as we looked at where we left off in 2019, and then what do the new priorities and impacts of COVID change, we had four scenarios that we studied of how we might address the need and the location for where county services are physically located in the county. The first scenario that's on here really is where we left off in 2019, so if you're familiar with that, we had studied right across the street where the IT building is, putting in an office tower there, that would be able to co-locate and group all of the downtown county services adjacent to the courthouse, across the street from this facility, and then we would be able to vacate and remove 82 Ionia from the county's portfolio. That still is a scenario that we wanted to start from, because there was a lot of work that went into that, validating that, but as we looked at the new requirements based on service delivery, storage, proximity to other services, there's less of a need for the volume of square footage for that location to justify an office tower. If you're familiar with building projects, the tighter and more urban a building location is, it's harder to build that in a cost-effective way, because there's limited space for a construction site, there's a premium cost in going a lot taller and a smaller footprint. So as we looked at that, the justification of keeping some of those services downtown in a building of that expense wasn't required based on the feedback that we had of where they need to be in the long run. So options two and three really look at how might we maintain the footprint that's required downtown to help with services that do need to be here, vacate 82 Ionia, so that, again, we're able to take that out of the county's portfolio, and then look to the Fuller campus, which, again, you've done a great job over the years of maintaining and adding to a central hub of county service delivery, and take services that are downtown, that don't need to be downtown, and co-locate them at the Fuller campus. Scenario two renovates this building to support the prosecutor, keeping space for county board and commissioner space, and then has the ability to keep 320 Ottawa, again, across the street, for future county uses. This proximity to the courthouse really creates a great triangle of connectivity for the county downtown, and then, again, vacating Fuller campus, or 82 Ionia and moving services to Fuller campus. Scenario three looks at also divesting from this building and renovating 320 Ionia for future county uses, and then just leasing space near the courthouse for the prosecutor. Again, all this other same things in terms of decommissioning 82 Ionia and having a space at Fuller campus. There is complexity in decommissioning this building, as you're familiar with the connectivity to the city building next door, so that is something that we're acknowledging in that scenario, but we felt like we needed to bring that forward. And then really, the last scenario is acknowledging that doing nothing, or maintaining the current portfolio, is an option. We just wanted to point out that doing nothing doesn't truly mean do nothing. There are a lot of facility requirements at 82 Ionia if you maintain that building in your portfolio to modernize it. While the county's done an incredible job of maintaining it over the years, there are systems, finishes, that are either at the end of their useful life or not meeting the needs of the groups that are working there right now. So there is work and investment that would need to be made in that building, and that decision would be predicated on if the county's going to keep that building in the portfolio. So just wanted to acknowledge scenario four as a viable option as we're looking at these four. We also spent some time with the county, and I think they've got a more in-depth analysis of financial requirements for these scenarios. I just want to qualify that this is a projection. There's a lot of work that would need to be done in whichever scenario you choose to design and document the work, to put a formal opinion and probable cost to this, but these are projections based on historic data, what's currently happening in the market, which, as you know, is a bit volatile. So this is just to help you have a comparison from option to option, order of magnitude between one, two, three, and four, versus knowing and putting in a budget a number that's on here, if that's fair. So that's the end of the summary.
The lease option, the $69.1 million, is the actual cost of these leases in here? Is that just for the construction?
We have some estimates, and we're going to take a deeper dive on that right now.
I just don't like the thought of leasing when we own so much property, so I just want to throw that out there, try to work around that if we could.
All right, so we took the information that we received from Progressive and took a deeper dive in an internal review, and we looked at it from two standpoints. One was solely a financial, what goes into these numbers, what are the unexpected costs, what are the long-term costs, especially with the lease? So we have two documents, several documents before you. One is the financial review. These were much too large to put up on the screen to actually read. The other, the colorized document, is a thematic look at our review of the four scenarios. So why don't we start with the colorized document? We took each of the four scenarios, and we looked at it from a facility standpoint and an operation standpoint, to look at each of these options and how it would affect our staff, access to our services, our services themselves, and we scored them thematically on a one-to-five scale, so five being the best, one being the lowest. And you can see it did test out what Progressive had presented to us, and scenario two did rise to the top in terms of access, use, flexibility, and long-term portfolio. Other options did test lower. I mean, maintaining our existing facilities was the highest rated in terms of cost, but as it was... The do-nothing option is not free, so there is an expensive take that comes along with modernizing our existing facilities, so we wanted to recognize that. But access for item two tested the highest. And then the third scenario, where we would still build on the Fuller campus, but sell our existing portfolio and switch to a lease, that does, in the short term, appear to be more cost-effective. However, in the long term, it really is not. So to find the proximity of leased space to duplicate what we have now would be a challenge in itself, and we would be in excess of $1 million in rent per year. Long-term, it does not make financial sense, in our minds, to seek a lease option downtown when we have existing facilities that are in proximity to the court. Over to the second document with the... This will let you drill down on some of the costs that we would anticipate with each of the four scenarios. So we tried to show the variance in the construction costs of building downtown versus on the Fuller campus. The cost per square feet is much more expensive in an urban environment. We also made some very, and I'll premise this with very conservative estimates, on what we could achieve by selling 82 Ionia and/or this facility here. So 82 Ionia, we're making a very conservative guess. We have not tested this externally with private realty companies, but we're estimating $8 million for 82 Ionia, and we are estimating $10 million for this facility. And again, I want to emphasize the estimate, because especially for this building, the costs can swing in either direction, because the utilities in our building are married to the city tower, so they are not separate entities. So if we were to sell, and another organization or private business was to assume this facility, there'd be a lot of negotiations that would have to happen with the City of Grand Rapids to ensure they could either continue to coexist or somehow separate the utilities, which would be an expensive venture. And just a reminder that the city does own all of the parking under the facility, and the county does not own the parking under this facility. So we tested the costs with the tower, and moving to item two, there's a contingency item in there that shows a 20% contingency, and what we're experiencing now is delays, increased costs on steel, increased cost on electronics. We're seeing, and you've been hearing that frequently from purchasing, that costs are going up. So we wanted to over-budget, if you will, to make sure that we're not presenting a number that is not realistic, you know? So we did add 20% contingency to that. The lease option, item three, that you can see through, we drew out the square footages, the costs, and we were estimating at $225 for renovation of space. So to build a new facility, it's around $425 per square foot. To renovate our existing facilities, we're estimating $225, and that was our conservative guess. Leases, when we factored that cost in, we based that on $23 a square foot if we were to actually go out and acquire space. What we're finding with... At 250 Monroe, they're paying, I think, dollars higher than that, so the lease cost is a little bit low, we're finding, in this estimate. In scenario four, where we would keep our facilities and modernize them, I did want to point out that we raised the per-square-foot renovation cost, because it is, we would have to live here while we're doing the renovation, so it's much higher to renovate a space if we can't really vacate it. Build scenarios, we'd be able to build, move, renovate as we move out. So I covered that quickly, because I know we went through this budget in the educational sessions, but are there any questions on the review matrix or the cost of each scenario before we move on?
Kind of curious about this building. What's the history of this building, when it was constructed, as far as our relationship with Grand Rapids? I know they own the parking, we own the rest. Are they leasing, or was that a kind of the trade-off? Are they leasing this from us? And I probably should know this, I just don't.
The relationship in this building, I wasn't here in 1969, but there was a... I always remember there was a little brochure that was put together, a hallmark in cooperation between the city and the county. And, you know, we also have a cooperative effort at our courthouse with 61st District Court in the city. When this building was constructed and shared, on Monroe, we share some common spaces. All the infrastructure is either on Monroe or within City Hall, like at the top with the chillers and such, the infrastructure for heating, cooling, motor control centers for electrical distribution. We don't have boilers, we're on the city steam loop, and of course, water. I think it was 19... I could be off by a year or two, but I think it was 1979, which was 10 years after the building opened, that we sold our share of the, our proportionate share of the parking to the city. And we maintained enough parking cards, I think it was 25 parking cards, that we would maintain for, I think it was 20 years, in that agreement. That has certainly since expired, okay? So we pay for any parking down below. Our relationship is solid with the city, like on everything else, and they're a fine partner to work with. Our agreement is, at the courthouse, we operate the facility as a primary tenant. Here, the city operates as a primary tenant, and we pay for facility services. All our electrical bills and utility bills, otherwise, they're shared proportionate based on square foot of ownership.
So it's kind of a bargaining process? They do certain things, we do certain things, and it's just a collaboration, or are they paying us each for... Who owns the building, I guess?
We own the building. We own this building, they own that building.
Okay.
But again, as Mark shared, this building is not a true standalone building...
Okay.
...because we need that infrastructure.
I got you, thank you.
And briefly, before we move on, I did want to touch on indigent defense, which is slated for 320 Ottawa. There's a $3 million line item in some of these budgets, and that is still a...
Your mic up, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Better?
Yes.
Okay.
I got one of those guys that named Chad in our office.
Can you please start over again now?
I can't. All right, yeah.
I think it's too bad and too old.
Well...
That's fair, that's fair. That's good. All right, let's try again.
All right, so built into this budget is a $3 million line item for indigent defense, potentially moving into the 320 Ottawa facility. We're not sure if that will happen yet or not, that's a question mark. So right now, our indigent defense has a hybrid process, where we contract out with a set of attorneys, and we have, I'm sorry, with the Office of the Defender, we have a contract, and we have a pool of attorneys that we manage in-house. In July, there is going to be a study that reviews our existing process and tests that against other models. Some models would require us, one of the models would require that we bring everyone in-house. In that event, we would need to build out 320 Ottawa. The fear is that it won't be large enough to house all of the staff in the long term, so that's one challenge we're up against. In our arrangement with the Office of the Defender, we do have the option of assuming their lease if we do change it up. So there's a variety of factors at play. The study will start in July, and I believe it will wrap up in December, and we'll have a better handle on if we're going to bring in-house, or we'll remain with some kind of contracted model. So this $3 million is a placeholder in the budget. Yes?
Probably has already been answered, but one question I have. If we sell Ionia, we're losing parking space, right? If we build a new administrative center at Fuller, are we gaining or losing because you're sharing with staff and our clients that would come? Where does parking fit into this? My other question is from a public transportation. I'm assuming it's easier to get here than it is Fuller? How does that fit into this conversation?
Parking, I would, and I'd invite Al to speak up if I misspeak, but parking, to me, would be a shift, so we would be losing some parking in the downtown, but because we're moving the lion's share of operational staff to Fuller campus, we would shift to surface parking on the Fuller campus, and we would not need the volume of parking that we have downtown right now. So we would still retain some owned parking and some leased parking, which leased parking would be in this building, as well as across the street under DeVos Place. So parking would be a shift.
With regard to those other points...
Mark was correct, spot on on what he shared about the parking shift. As far as access, there's two bus stops over there right now at Fuller, and boy, we hear from a lot of people, and...
Her staff.
...hear it regularly, you know? Our staff hear it regularly, how challenging it is to find the, the public services in here. Al has a real good scenario where he puts out, he'd, he'd really like to see the customer service approach where, where someone can either drive up or bring a bus up, see a building, see the door, walk right in and get taken care of, rather than, let's face it, in order to get here, you all remember the maze you took to get to this meeting here. And just imagine what that's like for someone that comes downtown periodically or once every decade. And virtually everyone we've, we've talked to and heard from as far as clients that, that, that visit this building or other, this is, this is challenging. And eighty-two Ionia, I want to remind you, if I could, we bought that, we, we originally leased that building when we were moving into our new courthouse across the street. We originally leased that building. There was a clause in the lease that permitted us to buy it at a certain point after so many years of lease. We got to the point in the lease where it, it was about the same to purchase it as it was to buy it. So we purchased it without the intent of thinking, hey, we will keep that as a legacy building in our long-term portfolio. Some of the, some of you have, have been through that building with me or with others, and you see the challenges there. It's a conglomerate of like three buildings put together with an atrium. It's older, but just because something's old doesn't mean it's worn out. Present company included. But it, it, it is a building that would need, uh, would, would need some, some infrastructure improvements to it and renovation and such. It's tired. You know, we, we've used it, and it has served its transition purpose. But again, please, please know it was never intended or remodeled to a point where it would be a legacy building, such as this building or courthouses are.
Just a reminder, reminder to myself about turning these on. This has been recorded, so I want to make sure everybody does get their mics on, does speak directly into it, so we'll hear this later. Thank you.
All right, are there any additional questions? We can run through the other documents as well.
Questions?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
So a quick question. So I, these four scenarios are all quite different, and obviously have different price tags. I just wonder why there is no scenario besides the first one that, that includes the board being at Fuller? Because I feel like us being in prox, close proximity to the administrative offices is really important for when we need to connect with people, understand, you know, have those conversations that you can't have if they're, if you, if the administrative offices are on Fuller and we're down here. So that's the, the first thing, like, why isn't there all four scenarios, or at least three of the scenarios include having the, the board offices in the same space as administrative offices? And then I also wonder why, like, if we're going to renovate 300 Monroe, if this is, you know, this is in a couple of the scenarios, why the prosecutor and the indigent defense wouldn't be able to share the same building as opposed to the way it is set up right now?
I think Al might have the response to the first question.
Yeah, I think, yes, I'm on. So the idea would be that we have the ability for the board to meet in either place. And here on the first floor, it could be kind of a ceremonial boardroom. There would be some admin office space here, too, because a number of us are on a whole bunch of boards that meet downtown. And so it would split time a little bit, but we would have the ability for the board to meet in either place. We would have a, the plan is to include a main conference room up at the Fuller campus. But I think, you know, part of what we heard as we put all this together was not wanting a perception that the county's abandoning the downtown, which I don't think we are at all, because the prosecutor would take over this space, and we would also have room for board and admin to engage the public on the first floor. But that's really the thinking.
So the board would still be able to hold these sessions here downtown?
Your mailboxes would be at Fuller. Would be the idea. Yeah.
I just feel like that's a disconnect. I feel like it would be a disconnect from, you know, how we have been operating, like, I feel like there's benefit to us being in the same space, having our meetings in the same space as the administrative offices, and being, again, in closer proximity to staff when we, when we need them. And, you know, I don't, if the downtown space is ceremonial, I get that, but what, what happens when we need to actually have those, those, those work sessions with people?
And we're fine with that, too. I mean, if the board would decide that you want your presence to be at Fuller, then we can accommodate that easily.
Or here.
Or here. Or in between, like we've suggested.
Right.
Any of the three. There's a second part.
Yeah, you had a second part of that question.
For indigent defense, Lynda, could you speak to the difference between the funding unit and the court?
Having talked with indigent defense and some of the defense attorneys, there's a, a high level of concern that some of the clients and the witnesses would be grossly uncomfortable going through security required by the prosecutor's office to go into the same building to meet with, with defense counsel. So that, that separation is well thought out from that perspective, so that we don't add any additional burden to the witnesses, or for that matter, you know, a victim that's coming in as a witness or anything like that in the context of the defense, and the same applies on the prosecutors. So it, there is a reason to separate those two uses.
Well, I, I, I get that, I understand it, but I know that also, you know, when we're, when we're thinking about renovations, there has to be ways to be able to modify spaces and entrances and exits and that sort of thing to allow for separation. I mean, it just seems like we're, we're, we'd be spending money in two different spots when, you know, the, it seems like the main need is to keep them both close to the, the courts, which is great. I just would like to see some, some more, I guess, some other options that are available instead of us keeping 300 Monroe and 320 Ottawa, you know, as separate spaces, instead of thinking about how we can use one space in a, in a, in a better way to be able to accommodate both things. It just seems like an, an expense that we don't necessarily have to have if we could think a little bit more creatively, I guess, about how that might be possible.
Well, I know Mark and, and Progressive have looked at actual neat, the number of people involved and factored that in, and we won't have a solid, a complete answer on that until the end of the study at the end of the year as to how many people are going to be in the indigent defense system. But, and Mark, I'm sure you can talk to it better than I can on the current estimates and whether those two offices would even fit in one of the, one of the buildings.
Correct. We're under some space constraints by even attempting to put them both in this building. I mean, the projections, if we were to bring it in-house, and if the state of Michigan began to require juvenile support, it would be in excess of 100 people, I believe, in the three-to-five-year window.
Does that assume a full in-house indigent defense?
Correct. Yeah.
But still, that would give us no room for growth in the next five, 10, 15 years.
Right now, I think we have 25 contracted attorneys through the Office of the Defender and 50 in our in-house pool. Is that correct, Lynda?
I think it's about 50 and 50. And keep in mind that the Office of Defender has space that they lease directly right now. The 50 that we manage are all individuals with their own firms or their own offices. They're not currently housed in county facilities. So you're looking at, if you were to bring the entire program in-house, you're looking at about 100, 100 offices. With some, you know, all, all the sharing that we can do, all the, the double bunking, so to speak, but you're looking at 100 people that we don't currently have in a county building.
Did that, do you have more follow-up, Michelle?
I mean, it answers my question. Does it satisfy what I'm looking for? No, but it answers my question. Thank you.
You're asking to take a harder look at that, I get it. Stephen?
Thank you, Chair. First, just a comment. I know I sound like a, a little bit of a broken record, but when it comes to transit accessibility, I do think proximity from door to stop is only one variable. And, you know, Commissioner Green and I were just looking at the transit maps ourselves, and, you know, there's one line that you can access those two stops from. And, you know, speaking very selfishly, that's a great line for my constituents because it runs essentially throughout the corridor that is wholly within my district. So my, the transit users in District 18 would be very well convenient, uh, convenienced by this, but because we have a spoke system that we can't control, anyone else who's trying to access our services via transit would need to go downtown to then transfer to then go to Fuller campus. So someone living in Commissioner Stecs district, or Chair Stecs district coming from Walker to downtown to transfer to go to Fuller campus, or Commissioner Paclas from East Grand Rapids, Commissioner McClos from Kentwood, or even those who live in, in Byron or Gaines who then get, find a way to get to the, that, the entry point into our transit network, that need to transfer and go downtown anyway to move to Fuller, that to me is a greater inconvenience than the distance one travels from your final bus stop to your door. Now, that does not take into account the fact that it is very true that this building is very difficult to wayfind. But I do wonder if an option was at all considered of a, kind of a modified version of one where we don't sell this property, given the constraints we've talked about, but we sell eighty-two Ionia and we build a far shorter, um, office tower at 320 to accommodate the, the needs but to continue the consolidation here downtown while still retaining Fuller complex for growth purposes? Has that all ever been considered?
Yes. I think, I think that was part of, on many levels, and maybe you want, if you want to speak.
Quick clarification. When I described option one, I, I said that it was where we left off in 2019. I should have clarified that the option one that's in the packet now was recalibrated for the current county needs, so it doesn't have an excess of space, tall tower. It would be modest. I don't remember the number of floors off the top of my head. I don't know if you remember, Al. But it, it, it is for the need that the county has, not for long. But you're saying in, in maintaining this building also?
Exactly. Even, even more modest, I guess.
Yeah. The only thing that we would need to look at, too, is the economy of scale. I'm not sure that you'd save a proportionate amount of funding from just shortening the building because you've got all of your general conditions and laydown space and the complexity of, of starting a project like that. As you start to add floors, it doesn't add a proportionate amount of the, of the cost. But I don't remember those numbers off the top of my head. We can get those back.
You know, I just ask, because, you know, I do think Administrator Vandenberg brings a valid point, which is, no matter if we keep the prosecutor here or keep some of our departments here, if, if the board moves, if the chief policymaking body of our county moves out of downtown, that's the, that's the message that's sent. And I do think that there's an importance of retaining that presence here, especially because we have, there are so many other chief regional policymaking bodies that, or groups that, that are centered here or meet here. And that creates already in itself an inefficiency if we're pursuing option two with this kind of split time. And if we could find a similarly, if we could find, find a way to reduce option one to the point that it's more cost competitive with option two, we might be able to rectify some of the issues talked about, whether that's the comments Commissioner McClos brought up, or the, the need to have parking that's a little more accessible to someone that may not want to pay for parking. I just wonder if that's something that we should track down, if it can align the different things discussed today.
And these options are really trying to seek balance amongst a range of things, and those are, that's what's on that thematic document. Because we're weighing, you know, public transit, yes, it's a little bit better here because of central station flow-through Fuller campus. It is served by two separate routes on either side. We'd have to weigh that against, and we, and we would probably need better input from clerk and treasurer on actual traffic coming in. So is, is it 90% of their traffic is coming in, you know, vehicle? Is it 1% that's walking in? Is it 9% bus? And I'm completely making up these numbers, but what is that flow? So if we're making a determinant on building location based on a very small set of use, you know, should we think broader and, and think to the, you know, the lion's share of the actual customers that are coming in and doing business? Another component is overhauling our website. So I mean, we're, that's a, a phase that we're getting into where it's a goal of creating that, that virtual county or that virtual city hall, so that if we can streamline things online, that's going to further reduce the need to physically come in. So there's multiple things at play. I wouldn't say there's one exact perfect answer in this. It's really trying to seek a balance of our use from access to customer service to even our staff interacting with each other. We're a very large organization and be, can become siloed quickly by the various floors and locations to which we report to. So by having a tower in our minds with very skinny footprint floors, yes, we're together in one location. We still maintain that side-load nature of we're floors apart. So there's a high desire to get all of our staff together on a wider footprint floor so that there is more interaction, and it works, and, you know, happy staff equals good customer service, so we don't want to lose sight of that. The, the, the balance piece of the downtown and having the action downtown and the core business, I think Al has spoke previously on it, but the, not abandoning the downtown. So please do not have this impression of that we're pulling everything out of the downtown and leaving. The intent is to maintain offices here as well as conference space, so that really the commission has choice. And long-term, we think choice is best, so that if you want to maintain the presence in the downtown, you have the ability to do that. If we find that the action follows the commission and you could go anywhere, then you have the option of a boardroom at the Fuller campus as well. So we, we defaulted to choice in terms of where the, the county commission would, would reside.
Before Tom, Matt, did you have, okay, Tom?
Thank you, Chair. Just a comment, I, I think, no matter what we do, we're going to alienate, we're going to, somebody's going to be mad. There's just no question about it. So if we try to kind of thread that needle and look out for one particular demographic or, you know, people living in certain areas, how they're going to get around, I think our main responsibility is, from the taxpayer's standpoint, how do we do this most efficiently? And people will figure it out. I, I don't like coming downtown myself. I think we're spending way too much effort on things like the amphitheater downtown, where that could have been someplace else and create a little more space for the rest of us. So I, I think it's just a matter of being efficient with taxpayer dollars, try not to worry too much about all the different groups, because we're going to be, like I say, there's no chance you're going to get through this without making someone mad. We want to keep the employees happy, happy employee, they get better service. And I appreciate the fact, we want to be as accommodating as possible, but we need to look out for the taxpayers. That's their biggest contingency that we have to look out for, and worry more about the cost to them as opposed to people maybe not being able to figure things out right away. I still haven't figured out downtown. I've been around here a long time, so things are always changing. But that's my main goal, is to make sure whatever we do is done with respect to your work, Al especially. Put your taxpayer hat on during this process and try to do things as efficiently as possible that makes the most sense. And people will figure it out. And again, we're not going to keep everybody happy, so.
So can I, just, just to clarify, under options one, two, three, and four, am I correct that it has the flexibility in these four to actually place what goes on here in the boardroom in any of those options downtown?
Correct. Option one, the boardroom would move into a tower facility.
Still downtown.
Still downtown. Option two and three involve building on the Fuller campus, but the board...
But this process can still take place here.
Two would stay here. Option three with leases, we would be selling our properties and leasing something downtown, but we would still find a lease space in the downtown core.
Right. Do, do you have some reason to believe that there is sufficient lease space in downtown for? Okay. I didn't know if you knew something I did. I didn't know if you knew something I didn't. I doubt we're, okay. Yes, Katie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, if we, have we discussed if we choose option two, if we would rotate between campuses for commission? Has that been in discussion or like?
It has not been. No. We're at the conceptual phase now. If the commission is agreeable with moving forward, the next step would be designing the facility. So, we would begin design and figure out who goes where, square footages, offices, and then, you know, eight to twelve months from now, we would have, um, a firm handle on what the building would look like and, uh, true costs.
Tom?
Are we considering technology in this as far as the ability of people to, uh, interact with people through, you know, different technology means as opposed to coming down? A lot of times now, the courts, even today, um, they're still doing through, um, digital technology. You know, you don't have to meet in person. A lot of these judges now are doing things, um, that way. And I'm wondering in the future, is there going to be less burden of people having to come down in person for some of the stuff they can take care of? Have any effect on your plans at all, I guess?
I don't think so. I, I think most of the traffic coming in has to perform some kind of transaction. If we can push that to the website, then yes, that improves the customer service, they don't have to come in. Um, I think if somebody has a general question, um, they're usually calling. Perhaps we could evolve into some video feature, but I think, um, most of the foot pr- foot traffic we have now is transactional, so it would require them to come in or do something on the website.
Thank you.
Any of it mandated by the state such as marriage licenses and that type of thing that you can't do online?
Michelle?
Thank you, Chair. Um, just a quick question about, um, the, um, the bus route. So, has part of, has this planning kind of research part of it included having conversations with the Rapid about the option, the possibility of making it so that people don't have to go downtown and transfer to come out to Fuller Campus? Because that would be great. I just wasn't sure if there had been any communication. I'm sure there has, but what has it been, I guess, to see if that is a possibility since it's not something we control?
Right. Not, not to that level of shifting routes. We have not had a conversation at that level yet. Um, we really were wanting to get into the decision of if, if that is a true option of us moving, um, and if our center of gravity and, and people are there, um, I think the, the Rapid would react to that. And it may be maintaining the two, the, the site is duly served by two different routes, um, on a half, I believe it's a half-hour service. My sense is, you know, the tier one option would be, do they increase the service level on one or two of those routes to a fifteen minutes during our operations? I think tier two would be, do they amend one of them to actually flow, flow through Central Station, uh, to serve the site?
What's that?
Thank you, Chair. When I look back to the informational sessions that we already had, uh, we talked about selling this building as being, it's listed as challenging here, but it, in the informational sessions, it was sort of deemed almost impossible because of being tied to the city. So, one and three, correct me if I'm wrong, but they seem like highly theoretical options. I mean, they're down here, but they're really only theoretical.
Yes, I'd say extremely cha- doable, but extremely challenging. Yes.
Okay. Now, if the city ever decided, and we just, I know that people think it's unlikely, but if it became a possibility to sell this building, has that been discussed, like down the line? Like, what if we did build a new administrative, uh, you know, center, but then we decided we were going to sell this building? Then what would we do downtown? Has that been discussed?
We did talk to the city about, uh, whether or not they would be interested in doing something different downtown. Uh, just informally, Mark Washington and I meet monthly, and the response was that it would have to be cost-neutral for them to do something different. Uh, my sense is that they were going through their own facility space needs analysis and likely would not come to a conclusion to move City Hall. Twenty years ago, we did work with Jack Buchanan, who wanted to buy the city and the county comp, the whole thing, and put a boutique hotel on this location, because it would be at that time right across from the almost completed convention center. Uh, but that, that money never cash flowed on paper, so it didn't move forward. So, uh, my sense of it was that they weren't interested in moving forward on a change in that location right now.
Thank you. Ellen?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I just want to take another swing here at the, um, thought of the Board of Commissioners actually moving to the Fuller Complex. If we're really truly looking at it from like a customer service perspective, I think it makes sense that our board would be located there, because I see it hard enough for constituents to come to our meetings and to find where we are located. I've always, you know, had to direct people where to go whenever I come in the morning. Um, and I just see it too, like, you know, if we're moving on to with technology, I'm not sure how this, you know, facility would be retrofit to that, but I would like to see us have technology where we can, you know, interact virtually with our constituents as well. So, maybe there's opportunities to better outfit something new rather than retrofitting this. So, I feel pretty strong about having a, a space for the commissioners there to meet. And I do think too, um, you know, you mentioned something about our presence here says something. We're still in the city and there's still, you know, groups that could come and meet at that, you know, potential facility there. So, I just think it's a, a moving space and a realigning of where we're supposed to go. But I, I think it makes more sense to meet at that location than to have a space here dedicated for just the board.
All right. Yes, Matt?
Yeah, that, one of the benefits in, in my mind of Fuller Campus is, um, larger vehicles, uh, especially, you know, a lot of people that need, you know, assistive transportation, need a taller vehicle. And you can park under DeVos Place, and, and that's about it downtown. Like, all the other parking lots are short, because it's like, I think this one down here is six foot six or something like, and so, so that, that's a factor, certainly more accessible, uh, to those that have, you know, assistive needs, uh, to go, go out to the Fuller Campus. And I, I totally agree that this, you know, campus is not easy for people who don't, you know, come often to kind of understand. I'm not sure the Fuller Campus is easier. Like, in, in my mind, it's, it's, uh, very confusing, you know, out there. Like, if you're not familiar with it at all, it's, it's, it's a confusing place. Um, so, just a, just a couple of, of factors there. But I, I guess my, my question is just on, um, so in the, in kind of the current commercial real estate environment, with the results of, you know, lots of people going, you know, full-time remote work, you know, it's, it's caused, you know, the, the office space, you know, environment to become, you know, in the news a lot. Like, I just saw a couple of weeks ago, some building in San Francisco that, just before the pandemic, was a three-hundred-million-dollar building. They're like hoping to sell it for sixty million dollars. Like, I don't think we're that bad around here, but there is a lot of empty office space and a lot of businesses and stuff that will be, uh, you know, hitting the tail end of their, you know, pre-pandemic lease here very soon and, and shrinking their footprint substantially. So, I'm just, uh, thinking about, you know, my constituents hearing about, you know, us spending fifty-nine million dollars on office space while there's a glut of empty office space around here. Did, did we consider, um, taking advantage of that, uh, oversupply and leasing, you know, for ten years, you know, somewhere else? That there is all the factors of, you know, accessibility, you know, surface parking, et cetera, that the, instead of, instead of building new office space, uh, when there's a, a glut in the area, that we look to just do a long-term lease?
Did not analyze all of the available space around the complex here. We simply made assumptions on if we could acquire the space, um, based on, um, the twenty-three dollars a square foot, but I think it's higher than that. Um, it's been my impression lately that Grand Rapids was coming back to pre-pandemic levels, so I don't know, I, I can't speak eloquently to whether there is an abundance of lease space downtown or not.
Yeah, Brad, didn't we look at that, um, years ago when we did the study here? And I thought that the problem was that a lot of the shrinkage and the changes are smaller spaces, and so finding something that has a fairly large footprint for lease is, is rare.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, so, so there are several of us that had the opportunity to meet with, uh, the Commercial Alliance of Realtors at an event here. I would have said probably would have been spring of twenty-twenty-two. Uh, they said that Grand Rapids is, uh, different than, than the rest of the country, because I specifically asked some of those type of questions, how are we doing on office? And, you know, they were telling me at that time in spring of twenty-twenty-two that, uh, that we're kind of bucking the trend, right? That, that we are different than, than the rest of the country and that, that space is, is not, uh, as readily available as, as the news has perceived it nationally, from what they told us at, at an event. Because, again, I was interested in that, how are we rebounding? Again, sure, there's some, some spots, uh, probably in outlying areas, but they said it's, it's filled up pretty nice for them.
If I could add, so before Mark started with the county, uh, we did meet with Ray Kaiser. He had a couple of properties he thought we should at least take a look at. One was the old Cooley Law School, uh, which is set up like a law school with courtrooms and that type of thing, and determined that that would be very expensive to retrofit for our needs, and then there wouldn't be parking available. Uh, and also, uh, he did bring UCIA. We kind of looked at that and determined that also wouldn't meet our needs. Uh, also met with Sam Cummings to talk about what's available in the downtown. So, we did do some scan before Mark started even as far as what might be available downtown.
Mr. Chair?
Yep, Ben, let's go with you.
Thanks. Thank you, Chair. Um, I'd like to kind of pull up a little bit, and there's been good discussion, um, today, and I appreciate the work of the staff and everybody else. My question, I think, is from the staff perspective. I know we're in a work session today, we don't make decisions in these meetings, but coming out of this, you know, what would be the most helpful feedback from us as commissioners? Um, you know, what is kind of the next step that, that you all are looking for in the process? I think the challenge is, we have a couple, just based on what I'm hearing in conversation, my own personal opinions, we've got a couple of these options that are a little more viable than others, I think, in our minds. But the challenge is, you know, you reach this intersection, any big project, you, you can't start spending money on A and E for something that's not going to, you know, happen. But there's also a point where I think we have to, especially with something like Fuller Campus, have a little bit better picture of what that might look like before we, um, move forward. So, anyway, my question is just to distill it, you know, what, what are you looking for from us moving forward? What, what would be most helpful?
Yeah, very good question. I, I think that, uh, the next thing we would bring to you, depending on what you ask us to do today, uh, but if you're, would be to ask, to bring back a resolution and ask the board to allow an allocation of strategic capital, uh, to do some of that A and E at the Fuller Campus. That would be the next step.
Thank you.
Dan?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so, I tend to agree, uh, with Commissioner McLeod and Breevy that, uh, if, if we're moving to the Fuller Campus, that we, we move our operations there, right? That they, they admin our boardroom, and I, I think it makes it easier. Uh, as, as much as I think it's neat being downtown, right? Um, that doesn't, that doesn't mean it's the, the right move, just because I think it's cool or because it's neat. So, again, I, I tend to go to that, that Fuller, Fuller Campus, but with, with kind of our, our whole group, right? The, the admin, the, the boardroom, and, and so, I, I tend to agree with a, a few of the folks here on that. So, if that helps.
Stephen Jay-Z, again?
Thank you, Chair. Wanted to actually, um, uh, build on comments made by Commissioner Antor previously about, you know, he is right, which, you know, this only happens a few times where I say Commissioner Antor is right. But, uh, you know, we, we got to mark, we got to mark those days. They're, they're like the high holy days. Um, but, you know, in the end, there, we're going to upset some folks, we're going to upset less folks. But when it comes to our obligation to the taxpayers and being efficient with taxpayer dollars, it is hard to look at option four and not, at least at its just looking at the numbers. I, I realize there are, um, uh, you've, you've provided the rankings, but those, you know, those rankings in themselves are based on the interpretations of, of the people who applied them. I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the, the twenty-seven-million-dollar difference between, the near thirty-million-dollar difference between this option and the others. And could you, is it, is it possible to quantify what we're losing out if we do that?
Maybe I'll reframe the question. I think that we looked at the, the scenarios through a return on investment. So, we're looking, as a municipal organization, we're really looking to build a facility that's going to last out fifty years. I mean, we're really looking at the fifty-year window of a move. And you think of government organizations, it's rare to rebuild and move and have a footprint. So, these are really tested on a return on investment in a fifty-year window. So, if we're going to spend forty-six million dollars to renovate our existing facilities, that really doesn't solve our long-term growth needs in the next fifty-year window, um, especially in terms of leasing downtown. Could we potentially pick state foot and pick up extra leases downtown? Yes, that's an option. But we don't know with, uh, demand and availability and proximity and access, those are all variables that remain unknown in that fifty-year window. Um, so, when you look at spending the extra dollars in a fifty-year window and building a new facility, starting fresh, versus rehabbing a facility that's fifty-plus years old, I would imagine, I can't remember what instructed, um, the return on investment, the numbers from a staff perspective don't, I guess they look better from a return on investment.
Thank you.
So, Mark, if we can expand a bit on investment, as I look at these options, Network One Eighty's space needs is part of the equation for at least some of these options. And so, I'm presuming that, uh, option one does not solve Network One Eighty's space needs, and so that, as a public entity, will have to find another way of doing that.
Correct. I do not believe they were factored in. It's our, no.
So, they are factored in option two, so their space needs are also solved in that. Option three also solves their space needs, but option four leaves them having to find their own space needs solved.
Correct. It should be mentioned too, that with Network One Eighty, they would be responsible for payment of their space through the lease that we have with DHHS. Uh, very likely that would be worked into the, the bond payment as part of their lease that would go towards their portion of that.
I guess my point is that it, it does help us address some of the cost side of it, but it does also solve a public need, which is Network One Eighty needs space. They're in, they've just moved into eighty-two Ionia for a temporary stay, um, but they're still going to need space. Not that that's directly our responsibility, but it is a public need. The other question I had is, what's the presumptions with respect to the hospital on the Fuller Campus under these various scenarios?
That would be taken down by twenty, twenty-four, twenty-four, it'd be removed from the site. So, we have a lot of options. So, we, you know, the next phase would be a true design and looking at how all the parts and pieces come together. So, by removing the hospital and by removing the Michigan State facility on the Fuller Campus, that gives us great opportunity to improve the traffic flow on the website, so you don't have that awkward, sharp turn as you're coming into the site. We can balance that roadway with the future build. Lot of opportunity, uh, site location.
And the other, um, question, maybe some of the folks have asked about the complexity of the Fuller Campus, which is already a little bit of a unknown for a lot of folks. And then you put a couple more buildings in there, and it gets a little more complex. Have we looked at the possibility of an internal transportation method?
Of not be on foot traffic, so the, the goal would be to intrude.
It's a big campus to walk from one side to the other.
Yes. Well, I'd say we haven't drilled down on all of the flow yet, because placing the buildings and designing the roadway really is that next step of how it's all going to come together. Finding especially will be a part of that programming, so that when you do enter campus, um, it's easily to find where you're going.
Tom?
I was just going to say, um, the Fuller Campus, to me, no matter what challenges it has, it's still going to be ten times easier to get around downtown for most people. it's still going to be 10 times easier to get around downtown for most people. For the majority of our constituents, they're going to find that much easier. It's just, you come downtown right now, and there's always something under construction. Our board meetings, half the time, we're late because we can't get here on time. You have to, you know, plan for all that. So it's just, to me, that makes the most sense, to do as much as we can out there. It's going to be easier in the long term for people to get to. It just is. And I think if we're looking out for our constituents' best interest, that would be the place to do it. There's a learning curve to everything, but I think that's a really good option, right off the highway. And, yeah, that's my only comment.
Let's say, let's say, excuse me.
Thank you, Chair. I know that a lot of county building layouts and how we are right now has all functions close together. But if we're moving away from, if administration were to move away from prosecutor and the courts, for example, what sort of impact does that have? Does that, have you talked to the prosecutor or, you know, Andy Thalhammer or anything about difficulties or, you know, that might arise? Because that'll be a pretty big separation.
Right. We, since the courts do operate themselves and the prosecutor has authority to operate himself, we have less of a relationship as far as ongoing operations than we do with our administrative departments that would be grouped together, I think, for better team management and that sort of thing. I would still maintain the regular meetings that I have with the court administrator. We do meet with the judges four times a year. We would still do that. And then the prosecutor, I go to meetings at the Fuller Campus frequently, so it's a very short drive. So we're not thinking that would really impact much as far as for those two areas.
Yes, Chris?
Chair, I may have missed this in the first couple of minutes that I was not at the meeting, but I came in hearing about how many of our services are shifting from the sort of in-person needs of the past. Have we considered ways in which we might also think about services that don't have to be associated with a physical sort of campus? You know, I'm thinking about what the Secretary of State at the state level did in partnering with Meyer to put in some of those renewal kiosks at certain locations. Have we considered at all in the efforts that we're working with our constituents on, what that might look like from a disaggregated perspective?
I think at present, we have 60 to 63 different applications on the website that are of a transactional basis or information. We haven't drilled down definitely on what could be in a kiosk, if you will, or, you know, are there clerk treasure operations that could happen at the North Campus in some fashion? We haven't tested that out. I'm sure there's opportunity, but I know staffing and different statutory requirements that may preclude some of that. So we try to stay centralized, but innovative idea that improves access with statutes that our clerk has to live with.
I could add to that. I know the clerk and treasurer and I have informally talked about kiosks and how those might be used in different parts of the community. I think the key, though, are the mandated services that the clerk, treasurer, registrar of deeds do that, you know, whether it's merit licenses, I mentioned, there's a lot of traffic in the building for that, that can't be done remotely. So if the state were to change the law and allow things like that to be done remotely, then that would be a game changer as far as how we do facilities.
And I've got one more question, totally unrelated to that question I just asked. And this is a little bit of a crystal ball question. But looking at the timeline, the timeline draft suggests that we wouldn't issue bonds until quarter four of 2024. Knowing that rates for financial borrowing have changed significantly in the past few years, do we have any thoughts about what that, those rates might look at like at that point in time? Again, crystal ball, right? So maybe it's a question of what are the rates right now, knowing that they're trending?
Jeff's crystal ball might be better than mine, so I would invite him to.
Boy, that's a difficult question. So right now, the lease bond we issued was the airport bonds, AAA backed by us. So it's about five and a half percent on a 30-year bond. It used to be around two-ish, two and a half. So they have gone up significantly. So it kind of depends on what the federal government does. They just upped it another quarter, which impacts the bonding rate. So if we start seeing a recession by next fall, which a lot of people are predicting, I'm guessing they would start dropping rates. But, you know, with COVID, they went from wherever they were at, two and a half, to zero in a day almost. So, but I'm guessing a slower decline. I would say five-ish percent if we do see a slowdown in the economy, somewhere in that range.
Did want to draw, I did want to draw your attention to some additional documents that are here, especially the friend of the court. Commissioner McLeod had asked some questions early on in the informational phase on the effect on the court and from a customer service perspective. So the friend of the court did send out survey questions to their customer base, and these are the results. And it did, there wasn't a true passion for staying downtown, I think, is the way to describe the results from the people visiting. It was generally, I think, 25 across the board, around 20-some percent just didn't care either way. 20-some thought it was convenient, and the balance did prefer to be outside of the downtown core or have a free parking option that's easily accessed.
And we have actively consulted and worked with our mandated service managers like Lisa and, well, I guess Matt, anybody who has ongoing contact with the public. And moving those to the Fuller Campus are seen as positives. Lisa, you're nodding your head, but yes? Yes. No, for the kind of services you provide.
And then the timeline, the sample timeline in here is based on scenario two. And again, it's a very conservative estimate, just to show that this is not a fast process by any means. It will take years to design, build, move, rehab, show the process. But it's also showing that early on, there'd be a desire to issue a notice of intent to see if there is any disagreement from the public on doing this, because we would not want to expend a lot of funds and then find out later that there is not appetite to move to the Fuller Campus. So we want to do a notice of intent earlier, sooner than later. And then once the design phase has concluded, that would come back before the county commission for evaluation, and you'd have, we'd have a better handle on the true costs at that time and what's happening in the bonding world.
So speaking of cost, Jeff, do you have a presentation portion of this, too, on the funding? Maybe before you get to the, yeah, Katie, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick thought, echoing some of my other fellow commissioners' concern, if we do have the administrative office moved to Fuller, I would probably, myself, also prefer to move the commission over there just because I think it, they're so related that having a different location for those offices seems a little bit illogical to me.
All right.
Hello.
Jeff.
Again, so right now, I think we're anticipating about a $60 million investment. We're in, we would most likely take roughly 15 to 20 million from strategic capital. So the bond would be roughly 40 million. When we sold 82 Ionia, then we replenished strategic capital in my mind with those proceeds. So we would build that back up. So roughly a $40 million bond, most likely go a 20-year term. That's what we've typically done. Waiting to get updated payment amounts on that, but I'm going to guess somewhere around $2.5 million for a 20-year term on 40 million. I haven't had it updated for the new rates yet. So that money would have to get set aside annually out of the general fund as a transfer into a bond payment fund, so.
Money questions, yes, Matt.
Not to suggest I didn't just believe Commissioner Burl, but I pulled up the car website and just searched for office space for lease. And there's a bunch, you know, in the typical spot you'd expect it. So I like zoomed in on Cascade Road 96. And the first one I clicked on is 116,000 square feet, which is like exactly what we're looking to build. So I'm just curious, it seems like that would keep our, if we did like an eight- or 10-year lease of existing space, kind of keep our options open at a much lower cost and keep the accessibility benefits of, you know, right next to the highway with surface parking. So I, I'm just curious if we're, for some reason, I could think of some minor reasons, you know, like there's county fiber lines straight to the Fuller Campus. There's, but like, is there, is there major reasons that a lease of office space would not be a viable option?
That remains a good question, but I think I have some good answers based on a lot of experience in working with the public and our services. For instance, not, and I know there's other places, too. But let's talk a little bit about the Cascade Road and such for 10 years, a 10-year lease. By the time we pay to outfit what our needs would be, our build-out costs, the return on investment would be abysmal for a 10-year lease, meaning it would be temporary, and then we have to relocate somewhere else more permanent. So I think that cost would be negated. Remember also, we need to be, some of these offices need to be relatively near to the courthouse. So that's why these options have fallen where they are, to keep centric here. And out at Fuller, there's already, you know, we've already shared, we're not abandoning downtown. We already have a substantial presence at Fuller, where their health department, our veteran services, our sheriff's department, our correctional facility. And so there's plenty out there. Leasing in this area, as I speak with developers and building owners, they're okay leasing some space. They're not okay selling their building. And the county's portfolio, we'd, well, Jeff would be more versed to explain it. It's a better investment for us to own than to lease. Because we usually, when we build, we're long-term. We will wear a building out before we let it go. Not because we don't maintain it, it just, we don't move a lot. We try to stay in one place a long time. So that's another reason why we were not prone to lease and historically have not done leasing. And we've been financially powerful enough to be able to have our own properties. And we call the shots with security as far as how we want it done. We're not cohabitating with others in that building. We had some challenges in the 90s when we leased space at 82 Ionia. We did not own it. We wanted a sheriff's department presence, and we wanted security in there. But other tenants weren't so fond of it. We were able to, over the years and attrition, some people moved out, and we could control our own environment and control our own destiny with the way we went with that. So leasing, financially challenging. It doesn't give us the independence we need as a public entity, taking care of visitors that come to us for safe environments and with our public and employees also. And while I'm up here just for a moment, some discussion on location of the boardroom. And between Al and Mark, they had shared opportunity to say, hey, we can make provisions. Because quite honestly, originally, we heard, oh, but we wouldn't, we wouldn't want the boardroom to move out of downtown. That was some original discussion several months ago. And I'm not hearing that much anymore. And I'm not saying I could prophesize, because then I'll get asked about a crystal ball. But my thought was, if we didn't make provisions out at Fuller, and no one objected to making provisions for the board to meet there, if we didn't make provisions and we only had something down here, I think it would be a mistake, because you all and any of your successors would come and say, why aren't we over there? It just makes more sense. So I'm glad to hear more conversation about that. And again, we all did keep an open mind with Progressive to say, yeah, we want to, we want to be able to accommodate you both ways. So a nice, healthy discussion, and part of a good meeting today. Lastly, I want to talk about the public transportation. The Rapid has been a great partner in working with us. And I remember when we opened up our South Health Clinic, there was not a stop there. They worked with us to provide front door. And so, of course, as you look at those routes, we all remember that they're dynamic routes, and they're subject to change. And if there's a need to go out and they see more of a need, I put my money on the Rapid, working with the community and putting spots, or stops in the right spots. Thank you.
Tom? Good thing we don't have that two-hit rule in that.
No, I really appreciate Matt's comments, because he's, you know, trying to look at expenditures, trying to keep it as low as possible. But I agree on the leasing thing, because once you do lease, you move everything in there. The owner's got all the leverage. We're a slave to whatever they say. And I just think Dave Ramsey wouldn't be in favor of leasing. Let's use the Ramsey rule here. There's just not a lot of upside to doing that long-term, I don't think. We just, we don't have any leverage when we do that. We own all these buildings. My biggest thing is the optics when we own a bunch of buildings and yet we're leasing. From a tax stance, even though I appreciate Matt's thoughts about maybe it'd be cheaper short-term, I think long-term, it's going to be way more expensive to lease anything.
Commissioner Coleman's question was, we truly needed to have that discussion and vet that. So it was excellent question and excellent, even if it wasn't a question, just the concept of discussing it was very important today and always, because other people will ask that question for the same reason, to say, hey, I was looking, I see a building over here and over there, why don't you just do that? So excellent point, excellent question. But again, looking at, we're a little unique. We're not, we're not just offices that don't have a lot of public interaction. Some of our offices have less than others, but some have a lot more than others. But excellent question, and it needed to be vetted and discussed anyway.
No, I agree. It is a good question, and it's just a matter of long-term. I'm a big proponent of looking out 50 years or 100 years. My other question is, which one of these options has the least amount of impact further down the road? It's the most stable, I guess, moving forward. Are the two options that are highly rated, the most highly rated, are they equal as far as potential? Which one has the best longevity before we'd have to make more changes, I guess? Is there a? That's probably the most stable for the longest amount of time. That's what I thought, too. I didn't know if that was.
Building on the Fuller Campus, because there's capacity to expand to the building. Since building a tower downtown, you know, adding additional floors to that in the future would be challenging.
So that gives us the most stability for the longest period of time. Okay, thank you.
All right, any, yes, Matt?
I personally like building as well and owning the asset and being able to have the upkeep be, you know, something that's an investment rather than just an expense. Like, so I think there's a lot of value in that. I just, I just think we not only should talk about it like we are now, that we ought to do the financial analysis on those options. To, at the very least, if we decide to build, to have good justification when people do ask. Because the, if we're at a $40 million bond, that's 23, probably, million in just pure interest expense. Like, so it seems to me like we ought to analyze these, like, options in depth so that we know, look, you know, building, you know, with that interest expense and, you know, like, it's actually over the 20 years, you know, costs us, you know, an extra 10 million bucks. But at the end of the day, it's worth it, because then we have the years that follow. Whereas in a leasing scenario, we don't. So like, I feel like we ought to consider those dynamics. I mean, the interest expense alone is significant. I mean, $23 million just to be able to do the building project is a lot of. I mean, $23 million just to be able to do the building project is a lot of dollars.
If we could attempt a pro forma, I think that one of the difficulties would be, but we can give it a college try. If we did a 10-year lease, we'd have to lease something else or build something in 10 years. And with the way construction costs are going, my guess is that construction costs in 10 years could dwarf the interest costs that we would experience by doing this over the 20 years, financing over 20 for a 50-year building. And so, how to guess at that, to really give a good impact on what the best dollar value is? Intuitively, I would say, to me, it seems like it would be quite a bit more costly to do something different in 10 years. But, so, I don't know if there's a method to do that or not, but we can, we can look at that concurrently with...
And I think it does get, I think it does get extremely complicated. I want to, what I'm going to say next, I want to preface by saying, we're still at the 10,000-foot level on much of this, and that's why we're having, we're having this. But with a new build, with a new build that you own, as opposed to remodeling with someone else's owns, we provide what the mechanical equipment is, the heating and cooling in there. We provide for energy efficiency. We provide where people are parking. We handle the snow removal to our satisfaction and possibly through energy efficiency, like we capture our condensate that would normally go to waste over for our snowmelt at our downtown courthouse. When the downtown courthouse was originally built, it was all, it was programmed by mechanical engineers to operate at such, at this level. We were able to optimize that by our second year to operate that at 50% of what they originally predicted that we would operate it at. If you lease a building, as was shared, you're at the mercy of the owner. And then, there's so many other, the second part I want to share on that was there's so many other articulations and small things that do add up, such as how we maintain it, from custodians to snow removal, to maintenance and care, to signage that we want to put up, and the efficiencies that we can garner with our internal operating it. And again, one of the biggest challenges is, if we lease a building, we cannot control who comes and goes into common areas and lobbies, and that's a hit for us. And then, lastly, that moving someone in 10 years, that's challenging for the public, too. And a lot of what you have shared today is, you're looking at good service to the public and your constituents, that continuity of service long-term, please don't overlook that.
And you have to build in, of course, the lease cost in the meantime, as to what it costs you on an annual basis, and what's the impact of the general fund every year, whether you're paying interest rates or whether you're paying rental rates.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Just pulling up, logging into my car west Michigan, we have two buildings downtown that'll be high rises, that would be problematic at a lease, and those are at a fairly large dollar amount, at 27 bucks a foot and one. And then, Bridgewater does have lease space available at 23 bucks, but again, now we're having our issues with access. And there are only 10 properties that came up that fit 50,000 to 100,000 feet. That one in Cascade is at 28th Street and 96 there, and again, 22 bucks a square foot, so we're talking almost a $3 million a year lease on that particular property. So, in that 10-year time period, we're about half of our cost, plus the interest, but, so, it is a tough market out there for that, that kind of our needs, I think.
Okay, so, yes, Stephen?
Thank you, Chair. I was wondering if Jeff could, I know he spoke to it very briefly, but could you remind us how much we currently have unencumbered in strategic capital?
Don't quote we, but I believe it's around 26 million, somewhere in that range.
Gotcha. So, theoretically, if we were to pursue the option four, which I realize has some deficiencies, but from a cost, it is the lowest, that could reduce our bonding obligation, could potentially reduce to half that, a $20 million bonds rather than a $40 million bond. Is that correct?
Depends if we have other uses for strategic capital, which I've heard of a few things thrown around, so we'd have to kind of see how that all plays out, but...
Gotcha. But regardless, a lower, I mean, I know this is pretty basic, but a lower price tag means a lower bond.
Oh, sure.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, we ready to... Lisa?
At the risk of beating a dead horse, which, this is obviously a huge decision, moving any county services out to Fuller that are currently downtown, and the thought of moving them once and then, at the end of a lease, possibly moving them again, I think makes zero sense, especially when you have realities fixated in residents' minds about where they have to go for these state-manded services that they have to be in person. So, I think moving more than once would be, to plan on potentially doing that makes no sense from a resident's point of view. That's it.
Okay, are we ready to move to the next steps component of this presentation? I think we are.
So, the next step would be to bring a resolution of approval to the board that would include a request to issue a notice of intent. Basically, the reason to do that so early would be that we can basically pay for some of the engineering costs with the bond proceeds, should we choose to do that. We can't do that if we issue the notice after we've incurred the expenses. And then, the second part of that request would be to establish a CIP budget and to appropriate $2 million to begin the design phase for the building at the Fuller campus.
Excuse me, and just real quick, we'd probably set that notice of intent high, 65, 70 million, because we don't know what the costs are going to be. You don't have to issue, you don't have to issue at all, or you don't have to issue up to that amount, but that gives us a little flexibility in case things get a little wanky in the court. So, we go a high amount and then plan on issuing quite a bit less.
Similar to the airport bonds that the board has sold more recently.
And that would set the 45-day referendum period, so once that passed, and if there's no referendum, then we're free to issue bonds, so...
Right, right. Emily?
Thank you, Chair. Is this something that we could use available ARPA funds for, to cover some of the costs of this project?
We could.
I don't think we have a lot left, but we could.
We could reduce what we bond for.
True. Michelle?
Just a point of clarification, so, the next step, I'm assuming, is that we would choose one of these options, or could we suggest another modified option, right? Because I like all of the things that are, the options that are here, but I don't necessarily feel like they're, the grouped option that might make the most sense is here. So, could we have a little bit more, a little bit more time, I guess, to vet out like which option makes the most sense? Because, I mean, again, I just, it's 58 million to build a brand-new building seems really low. Like, I'm just, that doesn't even seem like, I can't imagine being able to actually do it in their current environment at that price. So, it would be great to, like, for instance, I brought up the point of the county, the commission stand downtown, like every, most of these options, two and three specifically, those are still there. Or is that, what's going to be the differential in cost if we're not maintaining a significant presence down here? What if there was some other option for indigent defense? Like, it would be great to be able to have another, more modified option, based on the conversation that has taken place here today, for us to consider before we put out that notice of intent.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, but if we did the notice of intent, that is not precluded us from shifting option two slightly or whatever, because you make your ultimate decision how much of that approved notice of intent dollars you borrow based upon what your project looks like. So, I don't think that's precluding us from doing that. And I would agree that there's refinement that is called upon, given the questions that are raised here and the responses to those.
We would have the bond attorney write the description very broad and wide to give us the most flexibility that we would need, yes.
But at some relatively soon point, we need to focus in on what is it we're designing, what is it we're going to be engineering.
Yeah, I think I would look at it as, are we mostly there? Because if we are, we probably should get started on a level of design to answer the questions, knowing that there can be modifications made during that process. I guess I don't, we weren't expecting that we would get every detail in place prior to moving on something here.
Right, but I do think the questions were raised in this meeting, that commissioners should have responses to those, and whether that shifts us in slightly one direction or another, excuse me. We can still accommodate that, but we should have these answers.
Sure. How would you like us to move forward, then?
Well, so, the notice of intent, we can move forward with that, correct? On the amount, I don't see a reason not to proceed with that. I think we should have a response, a drafted response, to the questions and inquiries here. And then, with respect to what does it take for us to, as a board, to move towards general direction one, two, three, or four, whether we can do that in a subsequent meeting? By subsequent, I mean within 30 days?
We can do that.
On the questions to be answered of modifications, it would help if perhaps you would email in options, if you're seeing some kind of hybrid model between these four options, if you could articulate that to us, that would be helpful. And I'm hearing lease, I'm hearing board potentially downtown, not downtown.
Well, I think the, yeah, so you're hearing a lot of things, and I think the answers will help us focus on that. But, correct me if I'm wrong, the people that raised the lease, I think the lease question is a due diligence question primarily. I think most of us understand the dynamics of why leasing is not in the best interest of the public entity, but we need to be able to answer that with enough specificity. So, I'm not sure that that's changing direction as much as making sure we have a due diligence behind us. With respect to the downtown for the board, the chamber meeting or out there, I'm not sure that that can be refined a little further down the road. We could pick option two, if that's where we go, and still address more specific determination about whether or not we place this downtown for the board meeting or out there. All right? So, I don't think that's going to hold us up. But maybe there's other questions. I do think that makes sense. If there are other commissioner questions or inquiries, you know, now's the time to get them to us, and now's the time to talk, to raise them, to meet with us, so we can incorporate as much of that into the consideration as possible. But you're right, we can spin this, we can keep talking building sites for decades if we want, and at the end of the day, the comments that will not please everybody is absolutely true. We need to please the bulk of us and make a decision and move on. So, I would like to see these inquiries, these points of inquiry or further questions to us as soon as possible, and then we'll do a follow-up meeting within 30 days to be able to define, are we set to go with our general direction, one, two, three, or four?
Since we will have work to do once we get the information from commissioners, could we set a deadline of a week or two weeks, or whatever you're comfortable with?
My guess is that those questions are kind of percolating in your minds already, so I would say within a week, let's get the question. If you have something you want us to consider, get it to us now.
So, maybe next Tuesday by 5:00 would be a good...
Next Tuesday by 5:00.
All right, very good.
Now, 5:05, 5 o'clock, close of business.
We'll still accept at 5:05.
Can't say that. All right.
Because then you have our tech.
I know. All right. I don't need public comment. Yeah, I didn't see public comment in here, but I think I have to do it. Is there any public comment? Anyone wish to address the board? I see no one. I will take that as a no. If there's nothing else, we are adjourned.